All right, we have that everybody who is participating in the meeting. So I am going to be calling our meeting to order right now. It is September 8th. The meeting's starting at 7:10 PM. And I will begin the meeting, giving you the statements that Governor Holcomb has issued to us about holding remote meetings. The regular meeting of the Town Council of the Town of Michiana Shores is being convened at 7:00 PM Tuesday, September 8th. At the time leading up to this meeting, the country is still facing a pandemic outbreak of the novel coronavirus 19. In response, Indiana Governor Eric Holcomb has issued a series of executive orders, which among other things declared a public health emergency and suspended various state statutes. On March 23rd, 2020, the Governor issued Executive Order 2009, which specifically addressed public meetings and the Indiana Open Door Law. The executive order, along with the opinion and guidance issued by the Indiana Public Access Councilors, allowed for a meeting to be held by video conference or by telephone conferencing. This allowance remains in effect for the duration of the public health emergency that was declared in Executive Order 2002. Thus, this allowance was in effect on the night of the virtual meeting of the Plan Commission and of the Town Council meetings. The most recent order issued by Governor Holcomb are numbers 2020-41 and 2020-42, extending the public health emergency order, ensuring the town the ability to convene public meetings remotely. In accordance with the PAC guidelines for Public Access Councilor, notice of the virtual meeting replacing the meeting at the fire station public meeting room and access to the virtual meeting by video conferencing was posted on the town website in advance of the meeting. Because of the health emergency, public comments will be limited. No discussions will take place, just comments. Okay, we will begin and move on to the first order of business on our agenda. I'll stick that down. All right, roll call, Joan.
Yes?
You want to do our roll call for the...
Yes, I will. I assumed that you had done it when you said you had them written down.
No, no, Joan. Joan, I only noted our guests, not...
The guests, okay. Thanks. Did you see it noted? Hello?
Yes, Joan?
Okay. I got a dead sound. I thought maybe we were cut off.
No.
Dinah Dumbres?
Present.
Vice President Michael Martinez?
Present.
Michael's not on?
Yes, he's on.
Okay.
I'm present.
Pam Doobie is here. Mike Lancioni?
Here.
Rich Young?
Here.
Myself. Attorney Gunning, he's not on.
Yes, he was. Well, he was on.
Was he on?
Yes, he is. He's on.
Okay. Then we have Fire Chief Gary Bendix?
Is absent.
Okay. What about Police Chief Bob Zokowski?
He is also absent, will not be able to attend.
Okay. Heartboard President Dolly Millick is here with me. Matt Boone is probably absent, right?
He is absent.
Building Commissioner is absent?
Yes, he's absent as well. He left town the other day.
Well, good. DNR, Ray Dumbres?
No, he is not present.
He's not with DNR. He's with the...
Flood Plane Administrator. Oh, you're... I'll make that correction on my forms, okay? Flood Plane Administrator.
Okay. You know, I don't think I ever got anything in writing that he was. Do you have something that states he is?
Yes, there is, and it was a form that was filled out and sent to them. So we'll give you a copy.
Okay. Make it a note if you can get me a copy. Because it used to be the Science Commission. Somebody's got some real bad feedback. Howard Javon, is he absent?
He is not present.
Okay. That sounds like it's all.
All right, thank you very much, Joan. All right, we move on to adopting the meeting agenda. I sent everyone a meeting agenda earlier this afternoon, which I thought was our final agenda. And if there is... I did add one more thing myself to that, and I wanted to know if anybody else has something else. So besides the two corrections I made from suggestions that had been made over the weekend, I also added under eight new business police contract renewal. Okay, from number eight, it would be F, Police Contract Renewal. Does anyone else have anything that they wanted to add or amend? Okay, I don't hear any other suggestions, so I will ask for a motion to approve the minutes as amended by adding that one point.
Motion to approve, this is Michael Martinez.
Okay, Michael Martinez moved to accept the agenda with the one addition. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Mike Lancioni seconds. I will ask by roll call vote to adopt the meeting agenda. Pam Doobie?
Pam, yes?
Yes, okay. Mike Lancioni?
Yes.
Yes, thank you. Michael Martinez?
Yes.
Rich Young?
Yes.
And I myself say yes. Okay, so all Town Council members present, all five approved, accepting the meeting agenda as presented with the one addition to eight. All right, let us move on. The minutes, Joan, did you get the minutes out to us?
Yes, you got them.
Okay, I did not see a copy of the minutes, so I'm not sure when they came through.
This afternoon.
Okay. All right, have the others had a chance to read the minutes? Okay.
Do we want to correct a couple typos or not?
Oh, I don't care. I corrected a lot of them, so if you found another one, that's okay. That means you're reading them.
So do you want to know where it is?
Well, yeah, I can't correct it unless you tell me.
All right, page three.
Okay. What paragraph?
First paragraph, you left out the W at the end of that paragraph, etc., for the new.
Okay.
And I want you to change, otherwise it looks like I'm a dummy. In the beginning of that paragraph, I mentioned that the ADA sand bucket toy for King Kane Park, but I had not figured out how to install it. I know how, I didn't know where.
Oh.
We need to change the how to why. 10 years from now, I want people to read that and think I was stupid. I know there'll be a ton of people who... And then on the last...
How do you want that to read?
Just change how to where.
Okay, you just a minute ago, you said why, and I thought, I don't understand that. Okay, I do understand the where.
I might have said that, I don't remember. Okay, on the last page?
Why did I give these to you earlier? Okay, we're on the last...
I called you very early today to get stuff.
I'm sorry. I do have a...
All right, just on the last page?
Yeah.
The council comment, second line, it says, Rich Young, state the person.
State.
You need to state it. And then just, I don't know if this needs changing. He asked, stated the person he asked is 80 years old, and he felt it was too much for him. Would they think I'm the one that said it's too much for him, or the man did?
Yeah, I just said in that paragraph, I mean, that sentence, the person he asked is 80 years old, and he. The he refers back to the 80-year-old person. If I understood my English grammar...
Well, that's how I meant it, yeah. All right, then I'm done.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay. Let's move to get these most minutes approved, so I can go home.
All right, so let's go on. And I will abstain from voting on this because I have not seen the minutes and have not read them, Joan, I could not find them. So I will ask for motion to accept the minutes with corrections.
So moved.
Okay, Rich Young moved. I need someone to second this.
I'll second it.
Okay, is that Mike Lancioni or Martinez?
Lancioni.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, it has been moved and seconded to accept the minutes, it's corrected. All in favor, please say aye. Rich Young?
Aye.
Michael Martinez?
Aye.
Pam Doobie?
Aye.
Michael Lancioni?
Aye.
Okay, so I have four ayes, one abstention, and the minutes have been accepted. Okay, let us move on to our reports. First report will be the Clerk Treasurers. Any news on the job descriptions, Joan?
Nothing new on the job descriptions. Hopefully, we'll be able to meet this month, and so that maybe by the first of the year, we can have them all in place.
Okay, thank you very much, Joan. Okay. Clerk Treasurer, Joan, how about the invoices and claims?
Okay, everyone has... I sent the invoices over to you, but I didn't send the signature page. There was no need to send the signature page.
Okay. Joan, I did not get the vouchers either. I don't know, you may not have included my name on the emails. I don't have anything from you.
You're always the first one on the email. I have it MS Shores Council.
Okay, well...
So I don't know how you would have been...
I don't know, Joan, it really... Okay, I really don't have them. I will rely on everybody else.
Okay. Michiana Shores Volunteer Fire Department, $105 for rental. Volunteer Fire Department for the fire protection, $3,471 for the month. Town of Long Beach for fire, police protection, $4,735. Republic Services for the September refuse, $3,776. Myself for postage for all the notifications that went out for the BZA hearings, petition hearings, $230.40. Department of Water Works, $9.49 for the water for the garage, and also $9.49 for King Kane Park. Brenda Heckman, postage, one of the BZA certified mails, $5.80. Brenda Heckman for travel to the bank and post office, $52.20. Wex Bank, which is... Excuse me. Wex Bank for Shell Fuel for September, $89.72. ABC Asphalt, we've had a problem with that. It was billed to Long Beach, Town of Long Beach. And that was for paving, for repaving in an area of Michiana Drive. I think that was...
Joan, I don't know if it's you...
It's not me. We don't have a phone on here. Only thing we got on here is the telephone.
Rich, can you turn off your... Okay, thank you. All right, Joan?
I muted, I muted, Rich. Rich, I'm muted because of the feedback. You ought to unmute.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, ABC Asphalt sent me a bill for some repaving or paving that was done on Michiana Drive. And the bill's been made out to the Town of Long Beach. It's been sent back or requested that they address it to the correct town. That was $2,000. I have no idea what part of Michiana Drive was paved, but we do have to have that for our record. You know, if it's one block or whatever it is, I will need that for the record.
Okay. Well, we will ask the Road Commissioner for this when he returns.
Okay, the total for that is 1,000, I mean, $14,484.10. And then one bill that just came in was for the news dispatch for the, what do I want to call it? The notifications that went in for the BZA petition.
Okay.
Let me see if I can find that here. The total amount on that bill will be, and it came rerouted, it went to, evidently it was in the mail of one of their other customers, and we just received it. And that bill is for $1,089 for all the, for it and also for the zoning. We had $574 for one, one other set of, the first set of BZA. We had three for the first set that was heard, and two for the second. For the total for all of it is $1,089.
Okay, thank you, Joan.
So that will be in on it too.
Okay.
I'll have to ask.
Now, I need to ask for a motion to approve the vouchers as they were presented?
All move to approve is presented.
Okay, so Mike Lancioni moved. I need someone to second?
Mike Martinez second.
Okay, Mike Martinez seconds. The approval of the vouchers that Joan has just presented to us, I will ask for approval by voice vote. Rich Young? Rich Young, do you approve?
Hold on, I gotta go unmute again.
All right, hold on.
I've got Hiden in there now, I gotta find him.
Otherwise, I'd ask for a wait, but I can't see him.
He's got unmuted, he's got himself muted down, so he has to hit star six.
All right. Rich, star six, to unmute yourselves if you can. There we go.
I did not mute myself.
All right, do you approve?
Aye.
Okay, aye. Michael Martinez?
I approve.
Okay, Pam Doobie?
Okay, we're approved.
Okay, Dinah Dumbres approved. So five have, Town Council members have approved the vouchers as presented by Joan Okay, so let us move down now to 5C, and we, at this point, we will...
I'm not through.
Oh, you're not through, I'm so sorry, Joan. Okay, go ahead.
I want to make a note that next month, I came in early to do the vouchers for our payroll, but I got tied up on a very important phone call and couldn't get off from it in time to do it. So we'll be doing that next month.
Okay.
For payroll and for the payroll taxes. I also want to notify the council that I have received two more requests for public records from a Tim Foley, and this has been since August 26th.
Okay.
According to our town code, I do have to notify you. So I'm notifying you.
Okay, thank you very much for that. Yes?
I'm through.
All right, thank you very much. Now, let's see. We move on to 5C, which is our Town Attorney, and some final questions and information that will be gathered from the attorneys. At this point, I will inform you that Mr. Hollandbeck has dropped out of the contention. Greg Zokowski of Hodges and Davis is not able to be with us tonight, but we do have Shaw Friedman together with us. So I would ask my Town Council members if there were any other details that they wanted to ask Mr. Friedman before we have to make our determination.
Now, I would just say, Shaw, I appreciate you responding, getting back in a timely fashion with your fees and clarification on the hourly rate, just for everybody's benefit. You know, your best and final, if you would just share your hourly rate for, you know, out of the ordinary service.
Sure.
Your monthly stipend is, just for everybody's benefit, please.
Happy to do it, Mike, and we appreciate the invitation to submit. With us on the call is my associate Laura Nierenberg, who would be the one ordinarily assigned to handle meetings. But, you know, once you get the firm, you get the whole firm, and that includes myself as firm principal. We have quoted this as a non-litigation retainer every month because of the two meetings of $1,000, you know, which includes being on call. We tend to pride ourselves on really being on 24/7 call with our governmental clients, and certainly that would be the case in terms of availability to Joan and being available to you. We've also quoted a, our discounted governmental hourly rate of 150 an hour for any litigation. And litigation, of course, means, you know, any lawsuits, defense, or prosecution of claims, or the same thing with administrative agency claims. I mean, if we've got to bring ordinance violations and have to file those, those are also billed as litigation. And we also try to work with you as much as we can on litigation avoidance. I mean, part of what we think our job is to help walk you around litigation if we can avoid that. There are things we can do to help on risk avoidance, litigation prevention, sometimes running things past, past the attorneys ahead of time can help. And we also, of course, help you with open records issues, open door issues, that type of thing. But, yeah, as I said, I've got Laura, I know is on the Zoom call as well, and we're certainly happy to answer any other questions you all might have.
Thanks, Shaw.
All right, thank you, Shaw. You know, I appreciate that. So, okay, Council members, any other questions?
I'd make a, just want to make a statement for everybody's benefit on the council, just regarding Friedman and Associates and Shaw in particular. I've known or been aware of Shaw and Friedman's work for 20 years as a resident of LaPorte County. I worked with Shaw and his firm many years ago in the city of LaPorte when I sat on the Historic Preservation Commission as a mayoral appointee. Shaw was very helpful in that capacity. He's local, he's 20 minutes down the road, lives in LaPorte County, engaged, and he's on our call tonight, making it a point to be here. And I certainly appreciate it, and I think our town will be in good hands with Shaw and Laura and Friedman and Associates overall.
Thank you, Mike. Rich?
What?
Were you going to say something? I thought you were going to say something. No? Okay.
Dinah, this is Michael. I just wanted to go on record saying that all questions that I wanted to ask were asked during the interviews that Lance Hiller and myself conducted with Shaw.
Okay.
So I'm good, and you kind of know my feedback regarding those areas.
Okay. All right, thank you very much. Okay, I got some responses from Mr. Zokowski, but they, you know, weren't as clear. I mean, it seemed a little bit different the first time around when we were speaking in the first emails. And at this point, I would tend to say that I, having met, you know, Shaw Friedman with regards to the work that he does at the county, because before I got so busy with the town, I would attend all the meetings that the commissioners had regularly in LaPorte County. So I saw Shaw's work and so forth, and I thought he was outstanding there. So I, at this time, I'm going to ask for a motion from the, my fellow Town Council members as to a determination we're making with regards to hiring a new Town Attorney.
Dinah?
Yes, Joan?
As the Clerk Treasurer, where are you going to get $1,000 a month out of our meager budget? We've only been paying $1,500 a quarter.
Yes.
What has happened to the other firm that was involved?
The other firm that was... Joan?
It probably just...
Joan, did you hear? The other firm, it turns out, was charging a larger amount per month. It turned out that they thought we meant $1,500 a month.
Well, you want to give us a report on what they said they were going to do at the last minute? I'd like to have that on record.
You want to, what Mr., what the other response was?
What?
Part of it?
Someone that we may have to change the meeting date?
Yes, that gentleman responded with $1,500 per month.
What was his name?
Oh, that was Greg Zokowski of Hodges and Davis.
Attorneys, you're not going to get any attorney for $500 a month. It's not, not going to happen.
Yeah, we've had a good deal for a long time.
Yes, yes.
That could very well be the case. I mean, if it weren't for the fact that I volunteered and was elected to be on the council, you wouldn't be getting me for $500 a meeting. But, you know, it is what it is. You're not going to get an attorney to come to a meeting every month and to be engaged for $500. It's not going to happen.
The budget has gone into the accountants. I did not put in $1,000 a month. So we'll have to work on where we're going to get this extra money from.
Yes, it is. We appreciate that, Joan, and we understand that it's going to be a problem, and we did discuss that.
Well, the only thing I could say, if we've got that kind of money, then maybe I ought to be getting more money too. Okay, go ahead with whatever you want to do. I can't control what the council does. I can only state what the budget is like. We all know we're going to have less money for a budget.
Thank you. Yes, we understand, Joan, and I appreciate that. Thank you very much. All right, so now, I need someone from the council to make a motion with regards to our choices of attorneys.
Yeah, I'd like to move that, this is Mike Lancioni, I'll move that, that as a town, that we contract with Friedman and Associates for the next year based on the quote and proposal prepared and submitted by Shaw Friedman, and engage...
Come on.
Okay. Now, I need, I need a second on this?
We'll have to have a contract, you know.
I understand that, and that would be a next question that I would ask after the motion went through, okay?
I'll second.
Okay, Michael Martinez seconds. But at a point of order, because Joan did bring this up, Mr. Friedman, we will need to sit down and put together an agreement with regards to the services. And I know that Mike Lancioni mentioned for the next year, but in case something happens between you and us, I think we're going to be putting some, you have some eyes and work force in between on that, okay?
Sure, no, that's fine. We can, we've got, as you know, we do a lot of governmental work, and certainly we can pull one of our sample contracts we use, like with the Conservancy District and others. So that's not a problem.
Excellent, okay, thank you very much. So it has been moved and seconded that we approve the choice of Shaw Friedman and Associates as our legal representatives for the Town of Michiana Shores. I need to ask for approvals now, or for vote. So I turn to Rich Young?
Aye, I guess.
Okay, Rich Young. Pam Doobie?
I abstain.
Okay, Pam abstains. All right, Michael Lancioni?
Aye.
Michael Lancioni is aye. Michael Martinez?
Aye.
Aye, and Dinah Dumbres? Aye. Aye. Okay, it has four approvals, one extension to invite Shaw Friedman and Associates as the town attorneys for the town of Michiana Shores.
And we want to thank you for your vote of confidence in this. I know Laura looks forward to serving as well, and as I say, you've got the service of the entire firm, and we will prepare a draft contract to send over to you.
All right. Thank you very much. Okay? We'll be talking.
Thank you, and welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Thanks, Shaw.
Thanks much, guys.
All right.
Have a good one, Dan.
All right, thank you. All right, let us move on to departmental reports. We don't have anything from the police chief, Bob Sopkowski. He is involved today in helping Long Beach with interviews for a new police chief in Long Beach, because he will be leaving the service, he will be retiring in January, so he can't be with us. He did not have a report prepared for us in advance. I will move down to fire chief Bendix, who did submit a report. He is still up in Minnesota, but he prepared a report for us. So, here we go. I will read the highlights of the report. He said that there was 210.08 hours were spent during the month by the firefighters, either on calls for attention, training at home and away, meetings at home and away in public relations or equipment maintenance. There was a building maintenance meeting, a business meeting, the truck maintenance meeting, and a general meeting. There were no special training sessions this month. Calls for attention took place, the following kind of calls for attention. In Michiana Shores, there was one fire and two first responders. The town of Michiana, Michigan, there were two fires and eight first responders. Dunland Beach, zero fires and three first responders, and mutual aid, one fire, but no first responders. The special note that the fire department has sent is that they purchased a new battery-operated Hurst hydraulic cutter and spreader to replace their old hydraulic cutter and spreader that parts, where parts were no longer available. And they said also, the fall pancake breakfast has been canceled due to the ongoing COVID-19 pandemic. So, we will have to wait until sometime next year to join them for a nice pancake breakfast again. Okay.
Can I make a comment?
Yes, ma'am.
Since they cannot have a pancake breakfast, which they rely on the two pancake breakfasts for support, since they are an all-volunteer fire department, if people would wish to donate towards the fire department, they can very well easily do that. Put their check in the mail to the fire department so they can have some support, even though we don't have pancake breakfasts.
Thank you very much, Joan. That's actually a very good suggestion, and it's maybe even something we as a town can encourage among all the communities that use the Michiana Shores as volunteer fire departments. So, not just us, but everybody else. So, thank you very much. That's a great idea.
Dinah?
Yes.
I second that motion or suggestion, and they also, this past weekend, in the past, has had, they've had their 5K run, where they raised some money.
Yeah.
So, the residents of this town, and even Dunland and Michigan, Michiana, Michigan, should realize how important these people are, especially at the professionalism that the first responders have, especially.
Yes, absolutely. You're totally, you're absolutely correct. Thank you very much, Rich, for reminding us about the other, and I think that's a great idea, and that maybe that's something that we can work on doing, and definitely spread the news, you know, with regards to this.
Yeah.
All right, so let us move on to our building commissioner. Steve Thomas has gone out, he did take a trip out west, but he went to visit his mother, who has just recently been diagnosed with a very serious issue. So, he went to spend the weekend with his mother. And we have no specific report from him. He hoped to get something to me before he had to leave, but I guess he didn't have time. Dolly Millet, do you have anything for us?
Dinah, Dinah, Dinah.
Oh, yes, Rich?
There is an issue, I'm afraid, with a former clerk treasurer's house on Dreamwall. Joan, you're listening, right? Pat and Peggy's house?
Yeah.
I don't think the, there's work going on there.
Pat?
And, pardon?
Oh, Mark Raff, yes, you're right, there is. And he's already aware of it. He, it's been reported to him, but he has not said anything back to us.
Okay.
Well, I had stopped there one day when I was cruising the town on my golf cart, and I talked to one of the guys, that they were bringing everything out of that house, I'll tell you. And I told him, and what he mentioned, that his buddy, who was in the house, was the one that was going to rehab the house, and I said, well, you need to tell him to make sure he gets a permit.
Okay, well, thank you.
But the neighbor just to the south, Pat Pedlow, called me and said that we better be aware that it seems like they're taking, and then, again, we don't know where they're dumping this stuff, so.
All right. Okay, thank you, Rich, for bringing that to our attention. I will make sure Steve knows, okay?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you very much. Park board, Dolly Millet?
I believe Jean Paxton has found someone to fix the fence cord.
I'm sorry, Dolly, Dolly, we couldn't hear you.
Where do I go? No, just come over here close. Jean Paxton did find someone that'll repair our fence, since Action never called Rich or I back. So, I don't know what's the name of it. I haven't found it. Did you know, Rich? Because I don't know.
I gave her back the literature, but, yeah, Action Chents in Michigan City, the guy was not very good at responding to it.
President Dombry's, may I speak?
You know, yes, Jean Paxton happens to be on the call, so Jean can answer that question, Dolly. Go ahead, Jean.
Richard Young gave me the approved paperwork from the park board meeting. I, in turn, sent that approved paperwork to Northwest Fence, and they will be putting us on the schedule.
Oh, awesome, excellent, wonderful.
Okay, so I'll get someone, since he's not calling us back.
Thank you very much, okay. Anything else, Dolly?
What?
Is there anything else?
We can't hear.
Okay, anything else?
Oh, okay. Rich is working on the benches that are to be donated by Rich Puskin, I don't know the other name.
Ralph Fox.
Ralph Fox.
Mm-hmm.
So, he's working with them. We looked at a couple of benches that were real nice, but I don't know if you got back to them or not, Rich.
I got back to them, but we have to...
We have to work...
I was going to get together with Joan, and then we, we have to decide if we're going to send out that letter. This is kind of my, my, the next one, the booster.
Yes.
Dinah, did you have another letter to go with our booster request?
The letter, well, there's going to be a newsletter from the town that we'll go out together with the Booster Club, and yes, we have the letter ready. But, you know, Joan, will you be able to put together that address list for us?
It's waiting here for you.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, anything else for Park Boosters, Rich?
Let's see.
I don't have time.
I'm sorry, did I cut Dolly off? Did you have something more to say, Dolly?
We voted to approve, and still working on the signs and bike racks for the park, too.
Okay.
It used to have one, but I don't know what happened to it.
Okay, great.
Yeah, that was about all I had, not some...
Okay. Very good, thank you.
Well, and the boosters?
Yes, please.
Yeah, I talked to Joan about, you know, it's awful late, obviously, in the season to send that letter out requesting money. My idea, I flew this by, I think, Jean and Dolly, and Dinah, we didn't know if you had that other letter, so, you know, we hadn't done anything. But I thought it might be a good idea to change our normal request, since we're so late, to donate to the boosters, to ask people for donations for the equipment that we have to purchase along the path. Kind of like a special donation.
Okay, well, that is...
We have to get bunches.
Okay, well, then that will be something that can be done on the side, okay? We don't have to discuss, you know, that particular letter here, I don't think, because...
Well, I just brought it up, and...
Okay, excellent, no, thank you very much, Rich, and that's very easily changed. And actually, in the body of the letter, I believe it does address the new equipment for the park paths, so that would be a very simple change to make. Anybody else? Joan?
What?
Okay, no, I just thought that there was another comment on the Booster Club.
Yes, I did have a comment.
Yes.
It was decided that the money was going to be coming out of our regular park board budget.
Oh, for the equipment?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, thanks for that reminder. Okay, I think that that letter will need to be addressed specifically only by the Park Booster Club and Park Board. We don't discuss this at the town council. So, I thank you for the comment, but we will push that discussion on for something else, okay? Road commissioner, Bob Sopkowski, obviously, I'm moving on, I'm sorry, because time is flying. Road commissioner, Bob Sopkowski, is not present, so I cannot give any more information about paving, about patching, about road slides, and so forth. I do know that he did a little bit of trimming at a couple of places, but we are going to include a notice in the newsletter that goes out to all the residents in the town to make sure that they have trimmed off things that they want to keep nicely trimmed, that are in the right of way, especially those homes that are near intersection, where it becomes very hard to see around the corners. So, the town itself will contract to get the trimming done if it is not done by the homeowners themselves. And I think the letter will have some dates in it for people to take a look at with regards to what needs to be done. And if there are corners that you are concerned about, then please make sure that the town knows about it. We try to not write all these down, but in case it's something that's really obnoxious and we don't notice it, please let us know, or just let us know, and then we'll know what to put on the list. With regards to patching, we have no other news yet, and it all depends on how much money the town is going to get through taxes to see how much money we can spend on our paving. There were plans, but they may have to be, you know, adjusted, so. I think that's all we can do for the road commissioner, and for the...
Dinah?
I'm sorry, was someone trying to make a comment?
Dinah, yeah, Richard.
Yes.
I don't remember if it was Saturday or Sunday, but right here at the corner of El Porto and Hiawatha, a giant tree came down, and I mean, the whole tree. It just broke off at the ground, and it was very rotten. And it did take a little bit of, the way it fell, it did not take down the major wires, thank God. But within an hour, within an hour, Bob was over at the track, I think it was Saturday, and his son, who is the assistant, or, you know, his aide, was there, and then Chris Wolf showed up with his saw, and our town is so lucky that we have people that live here that react. I mean, this is a weekend.
Yeah.
Labor Day weekend, and they had to come out, and just today, I think the residents paid one of the tree people to take most of the stuff away. But I just want to comment that our compliment, I guess is a better word, our road group for, you know, we don't see it hardly ever. They're out in the middle of the morning or the middle of the night, no rainy weather, snow weather. We are very lucky, and if Bob is truly retiring, I think somebody, probably you, Dinah, needs to make sure he wants to stick around, and we don't know if he's moving to Florida or what, do we?
Well, we'll, we'll have to chat with him, but I do thank you for your mentioning of this, and you are right. We are very grateful for the quick response on the work that they do, you know, when we need a quick response.
Yes.
And we'll make sure we give them a thank you as well. So, I'm staying this publicly at the meeting now. Thank you. Advisory Plan Commission, I was notified by the new secretary that unfortunately she couldn't, she couldn't be at our meeting, and she couldn't get the report to us on time. I didn't know if anybody from the Plan Commission just minded a mention, the couple of topics, or we can wait until the next month to see what they would say, because... Anybody on the Plan Commission?
Let's wait, let's wait till next month. We got, we got a lot of, a lot of green highway in front of us here, that's...
Okay, very good, okay. BZA, so that's next month, then, okay. For the BZA, Matt Phone is not here, but Jean Paxton is with us, so Jean, could you please help us out with their report?
Yes, I can. Our last meeting was held September 3rd. We held, on the docket were three petitions, petition 002, Joseph and Jennifer Shanahan, special use...
Hey, Jean, Jean, just a second. Joan, you, your phone is doing all sorts of feedback, you're walking around with it or something, but you can't hardly conduct the meeting.
Mr. Lancioni, I am just sitting at the desk. I haven't moved the phone, nothing is...
Joan, I can see that the noise and the feedback is coming from your line.
Okay, Mike, can you, can you mute it on your end, then, just for now?
I will, yes.
Thank you. Okay, Jean?
Sorry, Jean.
Thank you.
On the docket for the BZA on September 3rd, 2020, we had petition 002, 2020, Jennifer and Joseph Shanahan. These are all special use classification petitions. 002 is for 325 Oakland Avenue. That petition was voted to be continued. Petition 005, 2020, Roxanne Martino from Michigan, Chela Rentals LLC. This was also a special use classification for 19 Angle Road. That hearing was held, and the special use grant was granted. Petition 006, 2020, Brian and Megan Barr, also special use classification for 3615 Powhatan Trail. That petition was heard and granted. Our next meeting is going to be a procedural meeting. It's on Thursday, September 10th, at 7:00 PM Central Standard Time at the Firehouse.
Okay. Thank you very much, Jean, okay? Let's move on to White Ditch. Nothing to report, Michigan, our white, the White Ditch was not mentioned at the meeting today. I attended that meeting. With regards to the website, John Marks of JM2 Web Design has guaranteed to me that he will have a, he will launch, I guess, like a trial of our new website sometime later this week, and he said it can go, he thinks that it will go active probably by the end of the weekend, at the beginning of next week. So, that's a report from John Marks. With regards to NERCSE, the biggest report was a meeting that took place last month, at the end of the month, and it basically presented, it was after our last meeting, and the big presentation there was the NICDD, or the Northern Indiana Commuter Transportation District, with regards to the multi-track of the South Shore Line and the extension down towards Dyer, Indiana. They've gotten their funding, they got an additional 51 million that was granted money from the federal government. They should get the final monies by the beginning of the year. They had already planned, I'm not sure whether they are going to start it or not, but the section that was going to go down towards Dyer would be started already this fall, and it should be completed within five years, was their plan, the section with the double track that's going to extend through to Michigan City with improvements in stations and so forth, should be starting as of like February 2021, but that should be done by mid to fall of 2023. should be starting as of like February twenty twenty-one, but that should be done by, uh, mid to, um, fall of twenty twenty-three. So that was the big report from the Northwest Indiana, I mean, Northern Indiana, or the Regional Planning Commission, especially with, with transportation, so. Um, and then La, La Porte County COVID meetings, I attend via Zoom as well to find out what's going on with regards to the county. And there had been a certain increase last week already again with regards to Indiana infections. And therefore, the governor again issued his orders to, to extend the COVID-nineteen public health emergencies. And those reports from La Porte County, so. Uh, if there are no comments on any of these departmental reports, I will then move us to unfinished business. Okay? So on the agenda, unfinished business, we come to the question of a leaf pickup program for the town. Michael Martinez, do you have something you might share with us?
Yes, I do. Um, I was working on an actual letter to send to the couple of, uh, possible vendors, I guess you can say, for leaf pickup. Um, as of right now, it's a rough draft that I sent to all the council members, um, with, with the expectation that, uh, Joan and I will be working on finalizing this letter and sending this letter out to that contact list that you sent Dinah by the end of the week. All I ask, again, just for time purposes, um, is that each one of the members look at it and, uh, give us feedback in terms of anything that we might miss. I do have a list of items that I'm already going to add just in talking with Joan. Uh, but again, by the end of the week, if you could please provide your feedback, be greatly appreciated for any additions or revisions.
Okay. Thank you. Um, all right, now, are there any comments from the, um, council members with regards to the leaf pickup program? Any, any questions, thoughts? In other words, anything else for Michael?
No, thanks for.
We're gonna have.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, Rich.
We're gonna have people who are not going to be willing to pay or want to pay. So I, I'm going to assume you're going to have a penalty in there of some kind.
Well, we have, well, Rich, you know, we don't have any data even with regards to how much the cost is going to be for the pickup yet from these companies. So we're going to be putting out a request for proposals to find out how much all of this costs, how they're going to handle it. And I do know, and Michael, do you mind if I answer some of these since I began? You know, some of the work on this?
Yeah, do my best.
Okay.
Do your best, thank you.
That's some of the questions that presented when I took this on last, you know, just, I think it was last spring to start getting some information with regards to, you know, how it's handled and so forth. Um, it's been narrowed down with regards to the various companies that you would set a time period somewhere in late fall that, uh, would consist of a two to three week time period during which the, um, during which the leaves would be picked up so that the homeowners would then be reminded to get all their leaves off of their property and onto the right of way at the edge of the property so that it would be easily picked up. Uh, one of the things everybody mentioned that I have spoken, any of the vendors mentioned is that to make sure it is only leaves, no sticks, no twigs, no logs, because they would not pick those kind of things up. They can't, the leaves would be left behind in that case. Uh, then, uh, the springtime would be a two week period again. Uh, sometime in mid-spring, maybe after people are coming out to begin taking a look to clean up their properties if anything else needed to be towed away. So it would be a one-time, I guess, charge that gets charged, but the services would be for three weeks and then for two weeks approximately about this kind of thing. It does not include the raking of your lawns. It does include only the pickup of these leaves. Well, those were just the things that were mentioned at the time. So for any kind of information, and I assume that there will be questions, I think, about this and, and, um, and I think that we, you know, any kind of questions we get, hopefully, we'll be able to answer once we get more information from Michael. Okay? Anybody else? Mike Lancioni, were you going to say something?
No.
No, okay, all right. So at this point now, we're collecting the information with regards to this and I hope that anybody listening here who had any kind of questions, you know, heard the part about the timelines and so forth with regards to the leaf pickup. Um, I would just state, um, I know that some of us have said this before, the town has tried various ways to have leaves picked up. People have been contracted to, um, for people, for residents to choose as an option kind of a service. Some people did, some people did not. The unfortunate thing that happened is that some of those who did not opt to do this did opt to take their own leaves over to their neighbor's yard so that the neighbor could pay for their leave removal. So, which is actually called theft of services. That actually is a real crime. So, um, and, and there were, people see what happens and people report what somebody has done sometimes, you know. Anyway, but that's just FYI. So those who are listening might hear and see, you know, there's some of the reasons why a town-wide kind of a leaf pickup for everyone to opt in on is probably the best way to go to clear off all the leaves. We have no dumping sites in town. They do have to be taken away. We do not have machines of our own, like Long Beach has machines, they could, that suck it up and then they have a company that takes them away. We don't have that material and nor do we have the money to buy those kind of machines. So anyway, this is as far as we've gone on this, that we will have more information from Michael as soon as possible. Um, Rich, did you do any discussions, uh, or anything on the golf cart ordinance review? You know, with regards to the stickers, remember we talked about getting stickers to put on?
Well, I think we have stickers.
Yeah, I thought there was.
I had commented that the fifty-dollar renewal, I think, is excessive. Uh, Joan, has anybody renewed since? I know you've only issued like three permits. Well, you, you muted Joan.
Yeah, Michael did. Michael, can you unmute? I mean, Michael Lancioni, unmute Joan, please.
I can't do it.
Oh, okay, all right, Joan, you, I'm so sorry, okay. Joan, star six again, please.
What do you want?
Uh, did you hear the question that Rich asked?
What was the question, Rich?
How many people have registered their golf cart? I think you only had three.
Three plus I had one from, uh, I believe it was two years ago. Um, I mean, that's what's been in the last two years.
This has been in effect two oh.
Have you had any renewals?
No, no. It's not been enforced. I think if it's enforced, we might get some action, but the police don't enforce it.
Yeah.
Well, the.
Well, what I had done, I, I'm sure, I'm not sure. I doubt anybody has a copy of the ordinance in front of them.
I have one nearby, I could get it. Rich, I have one nearby, I can grab it. Do you need it?
No, I, I want to show you what I added.
Okay.
Under section six, it says, "Any person who wishes to operate a golf cart, County of Michigan and Charlotte must annually register the particular cart to be operated with the Clerk Treasurers Office and pay the registration fee of fifty dollars, subject to review by the Town Council. And display receipt of registered fee, uh, payment at all times while operating said golf cart." So I inserted there a sentence that would say, "An annual renewal fee of twenty-five dollars must be paid on anniversary date of said golf cart's registration." Or we could just do it at the beginning of each year, however.
Okay.
That's all we need to add to change it from fifty dollars a year.
Okay, now.
I really.
Yeah, Rich, thank you for that. Now, what we would have to do, because it is an ordinance that the town has regarding the golf carts, that it has to go through a regular ordinance amendment process where we would have to put it together, read it, you know, do it again and then roll on it when we make a determination. So I think that this, um, we will have to put this together as a formal document to be able to be voted on. Um, with regard, it's, it won't be just as easy as, as just getting the line in, okay? So, um, I do thank you for that and we should do some discussing as to whether.
I kind of know that.
Okay, well, that's true. I know you know a lot about those passive ordinances. But I'm, my thought is, and somebody else, you know, jumped in on this too, that maybe even the twenty-five dollars is too much. Maybe once they register, people register, we just really, you know, drop it down. But it's important to register and make sure that people show the, the proof of insurance, making sure, you know, those kind of things are really important every year.
Can we just give it to them?
Yeah.
So, anyway, um, any thoughts, Michael, Mike, Pam?
No.
And I agree that, um, I don't, if I heard it correctly, I don't think it's worth twenty-five. Uh, but I do feel we might need to have a ticket. And, uh, this is important because we do have a lot of home drivers, as we all know and see every day, uh, especially in hot months. So we got to make sure that, um, you know, everything is covered in terms of the golf cart. But I wouldn't be agreeing with the lowering of the twenty-five dollars.
You would or not?
I would not agree.
Okay, all right, great. Okay, Michael, I mean, Mike Lancioni?
Uh, I have no comment.
Okay. Pam, do you have anything to say about this? Pam?
Airback on mute because of the.
All right, okay. Um, Joan, if Pam wants to say anything, you got to do the star six again. Okay, I don't think there's a comment coming from Pam. Um, anyway, um, so in that case, uh, we, we would need to just, well, like Rich said, we need to phrase this correctly and put together, um, a, um, an amendment to this particular ordinance to change the fee that's being offered. And if we have two of you suggesting, Pam, did you have something to add about the golf cart ordinance?
Yeah, there's too many of them.
Pam?
What?
Did you have anything to say about the, uh, golf cart ordinance and the renewal fee amount?
No.
Okay, so no comment from Pam on that. So we had the suggestion of dropping it to twenty-five dollars and, uh, Michael Martinez supported that. Mike Lancioni had no comment, Pam had no comment. I will then agree with them, with, uh, Rich and with Michael Martinez that to drop it down to the twenty-five dollars. So we will just need to write this into a formal ordinance and hopefully next month we could, um, actually work on passing the amendment to our ordinance. So making it a formal, uh, you know, change. Joan, do you have a comment?
Do I have a comment? No.
No, okay, thank you, all right.
I think we have too many of them in town.
Well, that's, that's my, pretty much, you know, uncontrollable on our part, like with regards to that. But hopefully we get people to register them and make sure that they are insured and follow traffic laws. Okay, thank you. And then I think Mike Lancioni had, you had sent me a short notice about, you know, slow-moving vehicles as opposed to just golf carts. So we'll make sure we, we make note of that as well, especially in that newsletter that we send out. Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, so this will be an ordinance re-amendment here. I'm just making myself a note on golf carts, okay? Short-term rentals ordinance, any kind of updates? Um, it's, uh, let's see, enforcement?
Dinah?
Yes.
If you do an ordinance or resolution, I've been wanting to mention this before, we have to have numbers on them.
Okay, yes.
Keep our ordinance book.
Yes.
Keep an ordinance book from a.
Okay. Thank you very much for the reminder. Um, okay, so now with regards to the short-term rentals ordinance, okay. Uh, any kind of updates from anybody or any kind of questions?
Thank you.
Okay, no other, I don't hear anything on that now. Okay, so there's nothing else to change. The short-term rental ordinance stands as it is. Um, we have, um, individuals who have already applied for their BZA variances and applied for permits, which is outstanding. So we are in the process of beginning to register to get grant variances and to register permits for short-term rentals and are, um, hey, it's great that these people are beginning to comply. So this is an awesome thing. Uh, but going forward, we will have to address what takes place. You know, hopefully, everybody will start getting in line and, and getting this all together for us. Um, road sides and roadside trimming, I think we addressed already under the road commissioner's report and patching across the town. We can't do anything because the road commissioner is not at our meeting tonight. We can't give a better report. And specifically, just as a reminder, because we don't know yet how much money we are going to have available for us to use. Even this year's money was slow and late and, and less than we usually get so that we have not been able to approach this, you know, just yet. Yes, Rich, did you want to say something?
Pardon me?
I'm sorry?
No.
It wasn't me.
Oh, it wasn't you, okay. No, I thought you were, you were, it was blinking, so I thought you were saying something, okay. Uh, in that case then, let us move down to, uh, new business. Do we have, which would be eight A, do we have short-term rental permit requests tonight? Anybody who has given, gotten an approval from the BZA? Have any of you applied? Does that, I see some names here that look familiar. So has anybody submitted their paperwork for a short-term rental permit?
Oh.
Yes, Jennifer?
Oh, I am true, thank you. Okay, okay. Um, this is my first time on this, so anyway, yes, I, um, had sent something over to Joan at the, uh, office saying that I agreed with the occupancy of four for our property at thirty-six twenty-four Birchwood. Um, I let Mike Lancioni know that I did that, but unfortunately Joan wasn't able to find it. So I took a picture of it and forwarded it to both of them today. I hope they both received it. And then I was asked to join in on the meeting tonight. So I'm in agreement with a four occupancy.
Okay, Mike?
Yeah, I got, I got that.
Go ahead.
And that, that was in alignment on that.
No, I'm, I'm here.
Okay, good, all right. Mike?
All right, everything is in alignment. The only question we had last month was just the occupancy, uh, uh, question. She addressed that. So, uh, uh, that was the only outstanding concern that we had as a body. So, uh, it's, uh, it's fine to, to act on that one, uh, if, at this point.
Okay, all right. So now do we need to, uh, do we need to actually give this as a voice vote approval? Are we going to approve any number of them together as they, I don't even know how we did it last month?
Dinah, I had a quick comment.
Yes, please.
Um, just, uh, with the four, just ensure that it's a clean document. I know in our last meeting that we were just simply cross it out and then put four.
That's true. Well, thank you, Michael, okay.
I would like to see a nice, uh, concise, clear, clean document so we.
Well, I use, I use the, um, building commissioner is where the occupancy number was and I just crossed it out and put four an initial that I don't know what kind of document you would be looking for.
It's, it's fine, Jennifer, it's fine. Mike, it's, it's standard contract procedure. It's all in alignment here.
Yes, and as long, as long as you have an initial for us, you know, and you put your initials, we're fine.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, all right. Are there any other permit requests tonight?
Well, I thought there was that one for Michigan Chalet Rentals, but I don't think they paid their, I don't think they paid the fee. And then there was another one, uh, that Joan sent over too.
Okay, so who is trying to speak now, Joan?
I sent that to the council, all the council members. The ones that passed, the one that paid. We have.
Thank you.
Brian and Megan Barr who passed and we do have their hundred and fifty dollars. Michigan Chalet, we do not have their hundred and fifty dollars and their, um, permit.
West. All right, so Mike, did you get a copy of Megan Barnes' permit application?
I have not seen it, so we cannot act on it tonight.
Okay, I have not seen the actual application either. Joan, did you send us the applications?
You didn't ask for it. All I sent out was what happened at the BZA.
All right, thank you.
Everything.
Okay, perhaps we will be able to get a copy of that actual application then. And we are going to have to do, um, I, I don't know even what to say right now. You know, I know that we need to make this decision at the town council, but we don't know what document we're, you're, we're looking at. Megan Barr, do you have a copy that you can just photograph and send to Mike and Michael and myself right now? All right, if you send it to us right, we would be able to see it right now if you sent it. Can you do that?
Oh, hi.
Hi, Megan.
Sorry, Brian just brought the phone in. Can you, can you just repeat that one more time?
Yes, can you quickly just take a photo of your application for us and send it directly to Mike Lencioni, Michael Martinez and myself? I don't know, you need our at, e-mail addresses. You could just, pardon?
Um, sure. So the entire application?
Just, just, just the pages regarding the, uh, permit application, just the signature and the numbers, correct, Mike? There's only like two pages?
Yeah, uh, yeah. I mean, this is, we're gonna, we're gonna take 15 minutes messing around with this.
Well, okay, we can move on to other discussions while this gets to us. But otherwise, I guess, you know, I guess we could put it off till next month because that would be the only other option. We cannot take action at an executive session.
Dinah?
There's five pages.
Dinah?
Yes, Joan, question?
I have the permit in the file. I can forward it to you, but not tonight because my scanner, uh, automatic automatic feeder is not working. So I can get it to you and you can act on it next month. We all know that they passed it, so there wouldn't be a problem.
How about the rest of you? Are you okay with that kind of suggestion?
Like, I can't vote on it tonight because I haven't seen anything.
That's right. Okay, no, I agree, but that's, we'll just put it off then for the month. Megan, can you hear that?
Um, sure. Joan, is that the permit that you gave us when we were there on, uh, last week? Is that what you're referring to?
I'm sorry, Megan, that's the one you originally applied for, for the petition. And remember, you had to send another check to actually apply for the permit for the petition to be heard. But this is the first check you sent to me and it's the first form. I do have that form. I checked the file. I do have that form. So they can vote on it next month.
Okay.
Okay, alright, thank you. Alright, so then, uh, and then President Dunbury, may I speak?
Yes. I just texted you the, uh, rental permit application. Page one.
There's five pages.
Yeah, there's five pages, Jean. And, and it, you know, it just needs to be reviewed.
She's got a copy of it, but it takes a while to do it if you don't have an automatic document feeder.
Okay, Dinah, we, Dinah, we need to act on Wiley's. We can act on that one and the second one until next month.
I agree. Thank you, Mike. So let's just do that. Let's move on since we can't, Michigan Chalet does not, uh, submit their check or the permit, right? So we can't move on two of them, so we can only move on one. So let us take a vote on the Willys', uh, application for a short-term rental permit. Alright, I need a motion.
I'll move to approve their, their application, uh, as modified.
Alright, Mike Lencioni moved to accept the Willys' application for a permit as modified to a lower number of occupants. I need a second.
Martinez seconds.
Okay, Michael Martinez seconded. I need, um, a, a vote. I will do a roll call vote now. So Rich Young?
Yes.
Okay, Michael Martinez?
Yes.
Uh, Mike Lencioni?
Aye.
Uh, Pam Dubey?
Aye.
Okay, and Dinah Dunbury's aye. There are four ayes, one abstention, uh, to the motion that the Willys be granted a short-term rental permit. The motion carries. So congratulations and thank you.
Yeah, Jennifer, I'll get with you in the next day or two and get you.
Okay.
Information.
Thank you. Alright, thank you. Now.
Dinah, before you move on, I have a question.
Yes.
Who made the motion? Do you know who made the motion?
Yes, Michael.
What is going on with the people that are not applying for the permit, but they are renting their property?
I'm sorry, say that again. What did you say about them?
What is happening to them? What, anything happening?
Currently, okay, mister, uh, okay, uh, look, look, okay, Rich, let me put it to you this way. We're going to be, that's the next section. That is part B, limiting, well, no, that's not part B, that's something else. Um, with regards to those who have not yet applied, now that our, now that our process is firmly getting into place and people are applying for their permits, we will process all applications that are coming through to us. And as these applications go through, we will then be able to start, uh, some kind of a, we will start an enforcement of all of those that have not complied with regards to the short-term rentals. But we're not going to discuss that part right now. Uh.
Let's see.
I'm sorry?
I looked at it, letter E.
Okay, yes, but it's enforcement. But see, that's another topic, okay? That's not quite this. Okay, so we will do an enforcement, but while we're, with these people are, uh, you know, while we have people who are actually complying, we are not going to jump all over everyone yet in town. We need, we're processing these and we are going to be, um, we are going to discuss at an executive session how we are going to actually move on the enforcement of all of those who have not applied for short-term rental permits. Okay? But that's a different, that's a different topic than nine. Nine is something else, okay? Um, let us go on, if I may, to.
I love that.
They've already talked about.
Okay, to B, which is limiting the number of short-term rental permits. This is, uh, we have received, uh, communications from various residents in town. They are both, uh, people, I mean, they're from people who are not renting, but they are from people who are here half of the year. And some of them are from people who are, most of them actually are here from the part-time or suspend half the year here, half the year somewhere else. And, um, the others are people who live here, you know, year-round, who are asking if it is possible to limit the number of short-term rental permits that are issued by our town. So, um, it's a question to discuss now as to how we might be able to approach that and is it an important issue? Um, we did find out that it is indeed allowed by the state of Indiana to limit the number of rental permits that are issued in any locality, no matter where you're at in the state of Indiana. So, um, that's one, you know, that's just a point, that's a fact that, you know, that can be done. So now we would have to start discussing if we are going to, are we going to try to limit them? Are we going to, how would we determine this, these numbers? Um, it's similar to the way a town might limit the number of bars they allow on one intersection or something, okay? Uh, towns do limit, you know, numbers of different kinds of places, maybe businesses or so forth. So, um, how would we determine what we want to do? You know, there are, you could do it geographically, you could do it by number of rentals in one particular area and so forth. So I'm opening this up for, you know, thoughts from the town council.
Yeah, well, I think it's, uh, I think it's a reasonable idea. I mean, uh, if you take into consideration, uh, if there's somebody that's opposed to, to, uh, short-term rental, and let's just say that, you know, they were, that, you know, people are applying and they were, they were surrounded by short-term rentals. I mean, that might be a, uh, uh, less than desirable situation. So I mean, I think that, that, that is a, a reasonable criteria that could be evaluated, uh, you know, through the BZA process that, uh, that would be considered relative to how many of them, you know, may be, uh, adjacent to, to, to homes that aren't rented. Uh, and then also how many in a particular block. I mean, you don't want a whole block that's like beach walk, right? Uh, uh, you know, that might be less than desirable too. So I, I think that, you know, that and others, uh, components could be, uh, uh, considered and put together in an amendment. Uh, but, uh, you know, those are just a couple that came to mind quickly that I thought of.
Yeah. Michael, anything from you?
But I think it's a great idea. I think it still needs to be vetted out. Um, I don't know if it's a working session. Oh, definitely it's a working session, but, uh, you know, the information you gave us is a good start. Um, but again, in terms of geographics, we're gonna have to do a little bit more research, obviously, before we, uh, you know.
Oh, yeah. No, I, I agree with you completely. Rich, did you want to say something?
Um, if you're gonna limit them, you know, you set a number for our town, let's say 100. Would that be the same 100 every year? That, see, that's another factor. You gotta make sure people apply.
That's a really good question. That, that's a great question, Rich, and that would be something I think that we would work on potentially in, um, if we do a, an executive session where we can start tossing around some ideas on how this might be done. And then, of course, we bring it back to the meeting for, you know, for, for voting. Um, now there are, there are issues, you know, like for instance, the, um, the issue that was raised by the people who, there were some letters received about this. So the, an issue that had been raised by a group of people was that they were very concerned about their, the value of their homes dropping if they are only surrounded by rental properties, you know, that they don't want, you know, that to be taking place. So, anyway, that's just, uh, just, uh, you know, I mean, something to start. But this was an issue that was raised that came up via a letter that was received by the plan commission, by a letter and, um, emails and texts received by myself. And I know various other, you know, people who are involved on, um, on the plan commission and on the BZA. And I think on the town council have received this as well. So this is, uh, something we'll have to work on then. So I'm suggesting that we move this into our executive session because we need to set, um, that, we need to discuss that and a couple of other things, you know, in a working kind of session. So, uh, my next topic here then would be setting a date for an executive session. So I leave that basically to Mike and Michael to help determine because you two have the busiest schedules. We can work ourselves around, you know, your schedule unless, you know, someone else here tells me that they were too big, you know, you know, that you can't come, Rich can't come, or Pam can't come, or something like that. So, um, so we need to set some kind of a date. So Mike and Michael, do you want to do this date setting at another time break? Can you give us suggestions right now?
Dinah?
Yes, Joan?
I don't believe you can have a executive session. You can have a working session, you know, a working meeting.
Well, okay.
There's only certain things that you can have.
You're, you're absolutely right. I think that some of the, there were some other issues that we do have to discuss in an executive session though, which have to do with jobs and so forth. So we may have a working session after the executive session ends or before the executive session. So we'll do both, the same.
You can do.
Thank you. Okay, thanks for the correction.
Alright, Michael Martinez, I'm free pretty much after 5 o'clock, um, outside of Mondays.
Okay, not Monday. Okay, how about you, Mr. Lencioni?
Well, it just depends. Every week is a, uh, is a new flavor. So when are we, when are, give me, give me a week and, and tell me what we're, what you're thinking.
Like I said, I'm, I'm good at any time. If we want to get started on some of this stuff, let's try for, I'm just opening my calendar quickly here. Just to make sure.
I mean, obviously, it's not gonna be this week.
No, it's not gonna be this week. I'm just looking at what's taking place on these other days. Okay, that's. I was gonna say, okay, next week I can't do Monday or the 14th and 15th I cannot do, and I can't do 17th. I'm sorry, here I said I'm not that busy. Okay, so I'm busy Monday, Tuesday and Thursday of next week. I'm open on Wednesday and Friday, um, unless you want to try to work on something already this week, one day this week. It's up to you guys.
I, I can't do this week.
Okay.
I could do Wednesday the 16th, and I'd prefer to have two root canals, uh, than to do this on a Friday.
Okay. I'm with you there.
I'm not available on Wed, to Monday, Wednesday and Friday nights because I don't leave here till 5:30 and I do have to care for, I'm a caregiver. I've got to devote some time to them. So I can't do any.
Okay, Monday, Wednesday, Friday are not good for you. Okay, so what if we read the week of the 21st?
Week of the 23rd?
21st, so that would be, uh, Tuesday or Thursday, 22 and 24?
I can only do the Tuesday.
Okay.
I'm good with the 22nd.
Okay, good. So then let's aim for September 22nd for an executive session and a working session for the town council, okay? I don't hear any arguments, so I'm gonna write that down.
What is it gonna be? Or are we doing it on phone again?
Well, you know what? There's only gonna be five, so we might be able, six of us, so we may be able to do this in person somewhere, okay?
But your meeting for their actual, oh, executive session is not open to the public, but your meeting just for a working, a working meeting has to be open to the public.
Okay, so then we'll probably have to do it over at, uh, well, we'll do it at the firehouse then.
Then why can't we do town board?
Okay. Alright, so we're gonna do, aim for the 22nd. I've got that written down now, okay? Thank you very much, and we will send notice.
It's a Tuesday?
It's a Tuesday.
What time?
At, um, gentlemen, what's good for you?
Uh.
Give you.
Let's do, uh, well, we could say seven, but we gotta put a cap on it. I don't, I don't wanna be there till, till 10 o'clock or, or something. So, yeah, 7:30 or something like that.
Alright, fine. But we can start by, you're okay to start at 7?
I think you have to do the working session another day, probably.
Um, you know what? The executive session shouldn't take that long, I don't think. So, you know, we can, let's, let's try for one day and if we need it, we can always move it on, okay, to the next. So, so let's try for that. Or we start, uh, we just, yeah, I, let's do that. Executive session will go first and then we can start in on our working and if something does not get completed, then we move it to another time. Uh, I don't want to do two separate days that we may get everything done in one. Um, so anyway, let's move on if that's okay with you guys. Now I'd like to set, move on to 8D.
Dinah, before you move on, sorry to interject. Uh, what was the location for this? Was this virtual or?
We, I think that we would, could try because for the executive session, we have only five of us. So we can, or six, I'm sorry, to include Joan, uh, that we would fit very easily into the, uh, firehouse. And then for, you know, for the working session, because that one is open to the public in case somebody wanted to come, um, I don't know, maybe, I think, I'm not quite sure how many people we could fit in. Joan, how many people would actually fit into the firehouse?
Generally, when, when they've had the BZA meeting, we have like, uh, 10, 12 people.
Okay.
And we have to have all the, um.
Of course, the mass sanitation and the social distance.
Correct, and sign in.
Okay, alright.
Big temperatures.
Mm-hmm, okay.
You could probably make the meeting shorter if you did a lot of investigating on things that you can put into this.
Oh, yeah, I'm sure that that would really help, yeah, and send out in advance. So, thank you. That's a good idea. Alright, so let's aim for doing, um, uh, a meeting, uh, in public in some, in like at the town hall, unless something drastically changes and we have to do it again as a Zoom meeting, okay? Do I have agreement?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Michael? Rich?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, good. Thank you. Um, okay, let's go on to 8D, which is setting parameters for duplicate housing. This is an idea that came out of the plan commission. Uh, Michael, you are the one who brought this up. Could you please give us some more information on this?
Yeah, absolutely. Um, the two things that I wanted to try to accomplish today, one, I see Mr. Gunning is on. Um, I sent this to him as well as the other council members. We discussed this, uh, during a plan commission last week and after talking with the planning commission, uh, they asked that I bring to the town council in terms of introduction. Um, the key was to figure out from a legality standpoint what needs to be done. Um, does it need to be cleaned up, feedback, but also again, uh, feedback from the council members. The whole point of this, um, ordinance was it started from a modular home, uh, but then kind of gained some steam in terms of, um, duplicate housing. Uh, you know, having the same house, the same plan, uh, you know, the same square footage, uh, basically from the same builder. Uh, we had mentioned, you know, we don't unfortunately want another beach walk like we do down in Michigan City. Um, so this would really limit, uh, the number of houses that were, again, duplicates. So everyone should have got a copy, uh, regarding the Mr. Gunning and also the council members. So I wanted to open it up in terms of feedback, uh, to the council members to see if they had any questions. But more importantly, I kind of wanted, uh, Mr. Gunning's, uh, feedback as well from a legality standpoint.
Did you, uh, gentlemen and madam, did you have time to look at this? Did you, uh, gentlemen and madam, did you have time to look at this on your emails?
It's literally three bullet points, so if you pull it up, it's pretty straightforward.
Yeah.
So, you're adding it to our present code?
Nothing has been added, Joan. This is a suggestion made in the Plan Commission, and they suggested to bring it to the Town Council to discuss.
Okay, but you know we do have something in the town code that says that addresses duplicate housing.
Well, when I talk, when I talk with Steve Thomas, uh, he said he didn't recall anything, that's why I brought it to him.
There is in there, um, I can't tell you where the exact session is, section is, but I looked it up myself after the last meeting, but I thought you already knew it, but now here you speak tonight, you don't know that it's in there, but there is one in there. That's why I'm asking if you're adding it.
Well, that's a good question or a good comment, Joan. Uh, what I can do, if you wanna send it to me, or I can tell me where to look, I'll kinda mirror both of them together or see if there's any differences in what I pulled versus what is already in there, um, and then send it out, uh, for Mr. Gunning and everyone else to, you know, show my additions as well.
Okay.
So, will you, you do that for me then, Joan? At least show me where, or just give me the, uh, the section in which we're talking about.
Okay, it's not difficult to find. I, I think I can do it and get it to you today or tomorrow.
Okay.
Okay, so if we don't have other kind of comments on that duplicate, because we really don't, if we need more information on this, then I think we're going to have to, uh, put this off until, um, until we have more information, until the next meeting.
Dinah?
Yes, Rich?
I, I need to remind, uh, our new members, I don't do computers, so if you want me to comment on it, I'm gonna need a hard copy of whatever it is.
Okay. And, and Rich, we're supposed to keep.
I'm sorry, but I, I'm just not gonna do computers, so, uh, you can hate me for that or look down on me, but that's my choice.
No, Rich, we're not looking down on you. All we're gonna do is we're gonna keep saying, "Come on, Rich, you gotta get that tablet", okay?
Well, it's not gonna happen, so, if you want me involved, then you need.
Good. Thank you for your reminder. Okay. Hard copy to Rich. All right. All right, any more comments on this so that I might move, or can I move forward on to E, eight D?
Yeah, you can move.
Okay, go ahead. All right, thank you all. E was police enforcement of calls regarding rentals without permits. Now, this sounds like it's weird, um, uh, and I probably didn't word it the right way, but this had to do with, um, residents who called somebody on the Town Council to complain about something that was taking place near them, okay? And I'm not saying that there were a thousand of them, a hundred of them, fifty or even twenty of them, but there are calls that come, that come through like this. So, what we need to do is remind our residents that if they get any kind of a complaint, or if they have a complaint about something, and I will list some of the complaints that were mentioned. Public urination, excessive noise and music very late at night, uh, a lot of, uh, trash, and then I guess someone was having fun throwing bottles into neighbors' yards at one location, one that I know, I don't know, could be even at more. And I don't know how many of these took place, but the suggestion is, is that when calls like this come through, whether it is a permitted place or it is a non-permitted rental, these calls need to be directed to the police department because only they can respond to that call. We can't respond to that particular kind of an issue. Those must go to the police department for any kind of an, you know, inter, with intervention, okay, at the time. So, this is why, you know, this particular section was put in. If I have misunderstood this, then I want the other, you know, um, any of the other council members to add on to this.
Nope, that's, that's it in a nutshell, Dinah.
Okay. Thank you very much. All right, so no other comments, but I mean, I want this, this had to be put out. So, if any of you hear this kind of thing, please make sure people call the police and not to call us, because we can't solve the problem. The next, I'm going to move on to F, police contract renewal. Our police contract will, um, uh, run its course in, I believe, at the end of February of this coming year. Is that correct, Joan, that it's at the end of February?
Beginning of February, February first.
Okay, so even, if it's even, you know, sooner, it's February first. So, we are going to have to look at this, this police contract, the renewal contract, to determine what it is that we are going to want to do. Are we going to, uh, try to renew something with Long Beach Police? Are we going to try to approach one of the other, uh, policing agencies that are nearest, for instance, uh, Michigan City Police? Are we going to turn to the Sheriff's Department? Or are we going to do something else, like look for a town marshal, which is also an option for us to work on? So, the, this is a project that has to be taken up, and we have to work on this very soon, and I'm thinking that a part of this discussion is going to have to go into our working session when we, when we meet, uh, you know, on, on something like that. So, I would like any comments on this right now.
Marshal, beginning, maybe for me?
Any comments from my council members?
No one.
Being, uh, member of the Plan Commission for like twelve years, many times, it, it wasn't, uh, an official act, but we sent contracts to the Plan Commission where seven, seven heads were better than, you know, even five on our committee, our council. But we don't have a contract yet from them, right?
No, we don't have anything from them yet at all, but it is something we need to consider now, what we want to do, because we have had, with regards even to enforcement of various things, where the police don't always respond to requests.
No, Dinah, you don't have to tell me.
Yeah.
But the, four years ago, when this contract was up, and Long Beach was going to really jack up their cost, uh, we sent people, including your husband, Dinah, to talk to various other organizations, like Trail Creek and, uh, County and Michigan City. And unfortunately, it's a situation, at that time at least, I don't know if it still is, where they didn't wanna step on each other's toes. And even the county, the, the sheriff, uh, of the county showed up and told us that he could not promise us very good coverage or something. So, um, but I, I always recommended as a council member, too, that, uh, sending the contracts when we had the actual contract in our hands to the, to the Plan Commission was a good idea. Now, you could, you could have a special committee, but.
And we may have to do that, I don't know. The Plan Commission is also, you know, rebelling against having to do what they claim that they're having to do all the work for the Town Council, but that is something to think about, and I thank you, you know, on that. Now, any of the Town Council members, you know, what is your thought? Should we devise a small committee amongst ourselves, together with some Plan Commission people? There are three of our Town Council members are on the Plan Commission anyway. How do you wanna handle this police contract issue? Because we, it's already September, and if this has to renew by February first, we need to start working on it now and on any other kind of alternatives, if we don't use the hiring of the Long Beach Police.
Well, I'll just, I'll just make this comment. I mean, if we don't use Long Beach, what other, other than the sheriff that Rich just mentioned, I mean, what other option is there? You know? I mean, we're not gonna contract with Michigan City, they don't do that. I mean, that, that's our only option.
No, no, but don't say they don't do that. They were in, they were speaking to us about it, but it was almost like a hands-off kind of thing, so they were talking to us.
Yeah.
Anyway.
I just don't see that there's any other reasonable option.
Well.
Whatever we need to do to, to, to the, within the contract, to modify it, hold it, uh, uh, beef it up in certain areas, click, clarify that needs and expectations, there will be a new chief, right? So, I mean, that's our opportunity as well, but I, in my opinion, that's where the energy needs to be spent.
Um, there is, I'm going to disagree with you on, on part of this because, um, we do have options. The Sheriff's Department has to cover everybody that is not covered by their own private, you know, police department. So, um, he may, they, I know that they're limited on their people as well with regards to things, but they also would send out the closest, uh, request help from the closest, you know, agency to come there. It is possible. Please, please let me finish, okay?
All right.
So, that that does, that could be done with regards to that, but I think that we have a really viable thing to look into with regards to doing a town marshal, as this town has had in the past. Uh, it's worth, I think it's worth, um, looking into to see, I don't wanna just sign up for another four or five-year contract with Long Beach, and, uh, without really looking into, we haven't gotten their contract, and as a matter of fact, even though that we pay for the service, we're never ever invited to their police board, so that's a thought, that if, should we go forward with ever something like this, we should be able to be on their police board to check and see what's going on, because we are using their services to, you know, have more input from us. But that's just one thought, you know, with regards to that. But the, um, but anyway, so I think that we need to do a little more discussion than just saying, "Well, whatever they give us, we're gonna do."
Well, exactly, but the two comments on that. Number one, Mapport County is the largest county in the state of Indiana. The Sheriff's Department is taxed at, at a greater degree in, in Mapport County than in any other of the ninety-two counties in Indiana, number one. Number two, a town marshal, I mean, I mean, how in the world could we afford that when, when we're complaining about, we, we don't have enough money to, or it's a, it's a stretch to pay an attorney a thousand dollars a month? I mean, a town marshal is one person. I mean, who, who, is he gonna deputize Barney Fines? I mean, it's, I, I don't, I don't understand that, but I, I don't. How it's not just with Long Beach, I don't understand that, but.
Okay. Well, I mean, there, there's more to do with regards to the marshal and the kind of times that they work and how, uh, the town marshal would have to interact with the Sheriff's Department and so forth, but I think that it might be something that I think that we should look into, that's my thought. I mean, you know, that, and of course, I don't know what, uh, what Michael and the other.
What's the contract amount with Long Beach?
Pardon?
What do we pay in Long Beach per year?
Uh, Joan gave us the number that we paid, that's a monthly fee or a quarterly fee, Joan? That was a monthly?
monthly.
All right, so we're paying Long Beach forty-seven hundred and thirty-five dollars every month.
Right.
So, we're paying, you know, it's over fifty-five, fifty-five something.
Right.
Forty-seven and ten.
A town marshal for that.
Pardon?
You're not gonna get a town marshal for that, and then you gotta pay, you gotta pay payroll taxes on top of it.
And you gotta furnish a car. The best thing that we can do if we stick with Long Beach is to have a representative at Long Beach's Police Department, um, what do you call it, board meeting. We've not had any representation, and we only, we're getting a little bit of action now, but we always did that before, I hate to say this, before the contract was up.
Oh, you mean, there's, there's a response from them, in other words, that they're, you know, they were more amenable?
They're, yes, I've seen them over here, you know, at the, when I come into the office, they'll be catching speeders and et cetera now, and that happens before every time we have a, a contract coming up. I don't get anything as far as violations in the town for the town ordinances. I haven't received anything for ages, no tickets or anything on it. We don't get the speeding tickets because that goes to, through the police department to the state some way or another, so we don't get anything on that. Only thing we get is violation. Once in a while, we'll get them for parking on the street. I haven't had any of them this summer for parking on the street. What happens to all that? That's why I think we need to have a representative if we go with Long Beach again.
That's a really good suggestion with regards to that. That's a very good suggestion to have a representative. Okay, well, this is brought up for a discussion. I guess, uh, if we have any, any, you know, more, we can discuss this again when we meet, um, I guess, either.
Yeah.
Well, we need to request, we need to get the, uh, proposed contract, you know, from them to see if they're even willing to continue on with this, that we don't even know that part yet, so.
Let me, let me, Dinah, let me make, you know, I've been around the longest.
Yeah.
Even longer than Pam, she's been around a while, maybe not longer than Joan, but anyway, I live on the two busiest streets in our town, and even in the summer, if I see the Long Beach Police more than twice a week go by, and by the way, I'm out all, all day long, not at night.
Yes.
And I would, and they admit, when we negotiated four years ago, uh, and Mike and Mike, you might be surprised and maybe not, they admitted that they're in our town two point one hours a day, and I really don't. Now, I would like to think they're in our town in the middle of the night when we're all sleeping, where, you know, more crime might happen, and maybe they are, but, uh, I also think, Mike mentioned, Mike Lencioni mentioned, uh, that with Bob retiring, the opportunities, um, maybe when I said nobody likes step on toes, well, he's been the chief for like twenty-five years, so these other departments didn't wanna step on his toes, I think, more than Long Beach. Um, but I, I think your suggestion of bringing it up, either executive session or something, um, it, it's frustrating to argue with these people from Long Beach.
Okay, Pam, did you have any comments you wanted to make? Thank you, Rich. No?
Dinah, this is Michael, I just think there needs to be a setting outside of this, this can be dragged on, so I think, you know, figure out our options. And I did hear, correct me if I'm wrong, but, uh, Michigan City was a moot point, right?
Michigan City, well, Michael's, Mike said that Michigan City may be a moot point, but Michigan City may not, because Michigan, as Rich just said, um, all of these agencies really didn't wanna step on the chief's toes, but if he is changing.
I really think that.
You know, to, to, to speak with them. I think that before we make any kind of an agreement, we should.
We should.
Others, instead of just automatically just renewing with them. It would be a reaching out, but that's my suggestion, and I don't know how the rest of you might, you know, might think and vote on that. So, and, and, you know, so, so I'm, I'm just gonna put that out there. I said I think that we should look into more than just the Long Beach, we need to get their contract to see what they would say anyway, but we need to look at our police contract, we need to reach out to the other agencies to see if they have any interest at all, and then we can go forward, you know, and make a decision, instead of just signing on with the same guy that we had.
I agree.
Okay, thank you. So, um, I don't know whether you wanna leave this to put together, uh, a group when we need to do a working session or executive session, or you wanna put together a group today?
No, we, wait till the exec.
All right, so we will work on that at the executive session to put on together a group that's going to study this. All right, thank you. Um, so let's then move on to the attorney report from, uh, thank you, Mr. Gunning. Of course, oh, does somebody ask?
I just have one other point of new business I just wanna add on there.
Oh.
Um, and, and that is, uh, we don't, I just wanna get it, get it out there, but there's been discussion, obviously, about speeding. Rich, you just kinda touched on it, on, on El Portal in particular.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, probably to a lesser degree. I get it, I see it, y, y, you know, um, um, and I mean, it, it needs to be addressed, and we may wanna consider, uh, an additional stop sign or two at the intersections that don't have them, I, that's fine, too, but what we cannot have is people going out in the road with cans of spray paint, spray, spray paint.
Yes.
But unilaterally, the speed limit onto the, onto the roadway, and that's what has just happened over on El Portal. Um, I, I don't know the resident right there, but it's the person that's got the signage out. I mean, we need to send like a, like a, "Don't do that anymore" or "Cease and desist if anybody knows them". We keep, I, I, look, I get it, but we can't have people for everything, like, I, I mean, pick, pick your thing, what everybody's gonna go out and spray paint it out in the road? We can't do this. I mean, that's like vigilante justice or something. I mean, it's just not, not proper, and, uh, that's not acceptable in town. and uh, that's not acceptable in town.
Actually, thank you for bringing this up, because that is, that is a good point. So we should, you know, ask when somebody does, you're right, it does come out like a vigilante justice. Um, and that really was the point, and I, I apologize for not including that, because I did get some suggestions on um, seeing about adding more stop signs uh, at various places in the town anyway, and I know speed bumps are not really, uh, it's not something that uh, um, I think that we were able to do, but I think that uh, increasing stop signs, since it is our own community, we should be able to determine where we want to put these stop signs. I don't, I, I'm not sure, but I don't think we should have to ask, you know, other kind of uh, authorities, like the board county, like this, that since we administer this on our own. So this is a great suggestion, and I think we'll have to look into that to find out, you know, um, about putting in more stop signs. And maybe when our road commissioner is back, we could discuss that with him, because he would be involved in this.
Yeah, that's why I wanted to get it on new business, so.
Thank you very much. Excellent. Thank you very much for bringing that up. Um, Rich, did you want to try to say something?
No, I agree.
Okay.
I agree, and I, I think I know who's doing it, so I'll try to talk to him.
Okay, thank you very much, Rich. Okay. Alright, I'm sorry, uh, Jeffrey Gunning, please. I'm sorry that we uh, you know, jumped to you and then moved back again. Take the floor, please. Can you unmute Mr. Gunning, or is he muted?
Who are you talking?
Jeffrey Gunning. Mike, can you unmute Mr. Gunning?
I can't, I can't unmute.
Okay. Mr. Gunning, please press star six.
Maybe he hasn't got.
There he is.
I thought he wasn't.
He's on. Mr. Gunning? We can't hear you yet, in case you're speaking. Make sure you unmute your phone.
He's unmuted.
I'm wondering if he pressed mute on his button.
Does he have to hit star six?
Jeffrey, we can't hear you at all.
He pretty dumb. Probably hung up.
No, he didn't hang up, he's live, because he unmuted. Unless the cell phone you're using, have you pressed the mute button on your cell phone? Unmute that part.
Maybe his battery's a dead.
No, then he would have, he would have completely left the meeting then.
Oh. Bert's calling Jeff.
Hello, Jeff? Try to unmute that phone on your end, you unmuted with a star six, but unmute your mute button. Alright, and I know that Mr. Gunning has something to report to us, so I just hope he can get in. Uh, Mr. Gunning, give me a call on my house phone, uh, because I'm assuming you can hear me, and then I can uh, let everyone else listen through that, okay? Okay, until Mr. Gunning gets himself connected to us, I'm going to um, uh.
Move on.
I'm sorry, are you on?
No, move on.
Yeah, I am gonna move on, okay. Um, we don't have any other miscellaneous business. I'm gonna wait, Mr. Gunning, I'm waiting for your phone call. Um, okay, communications. Um, we received a letter from.
Dinah, I, I got him on the phone, I'm just gonna put him on speaker. Here we go.
Excellent, okay. Jeffrey?
Go ahead, Jeff.
Okay, uh, I hope everyone can hear me. Uh, let me begin by commenting that uh, Councilman Martinez raised the um, public housing question, and I, let me initially respond that uh, depending upon whether or not that is a zoning ordinance action, you'd have to go through the plan commission. The council could uh, force that as a question to the plan commission if it's a zoning ordinance change through an inducement resolution. But if you determine that it's a building ordinance, then you don't need to, uh, the plan commission and the council can undertake to write an ordinance uh, on its own. And uh, I would recommend that uh, you take that up with your, your new attorney. So to the uh, reason that I'm on the call, and that is the uh, report on the ordinance violation case, the town versus uh, Ureca, um, I think the council is informed to the extent that um, we obtained yet another in large good of time with regard to the case. And this last one is for an indefinite period, uh, so we've stopped that activity. Additionally, um, I think the council is all aware that our defendant owes the town answers to the second set of interrogatories, that uh, they are over a year and a half uh, late in producing documents under the request to produce, and that uh, we've expressed an opinion that the answers to the first set of interrogatories are insufficient or non-responsive. Against that backdrop, uh, we've begun a dialogue for a possible settlement, and as I've received communications all along, that uh, the attorney on the case for the defendant is indicated he will send out to me a letter with their settlement proposal, or send out to me, or it's in the mail, uh, discovery responses. I have not received anything, and I did receive a voicemail on um, August thirty-first. And the voicemail um, acknowledged my communication with regard to a possible settlement. The uh, the voicemail continued to say that because uh, Bob Ureca, Ureca are interested in making this go away like the COVID virus, um, they have authorized him to set upon settlement with a uh, a zero, zero expenditure on both sides with mutual dismissals. Um, he said, he was sending out that day, he was going to have a secretary out, a written proposal, I had not received anything. Uh, so our options at this point in time uh, would be to have an executive session and discuss the matter. Um, if the council would be willing tonight to undertake uh, some uh, action, a vote perhaps, to move forward with propacizing settlement under those terms, that would be a zero, zero um, payout from either side, and uh, settling it by mutual dismissal, uh, we could go forward with that, or I could just uh, continue to request a uh, written proposal to take before the council.
Okay, so I'm going to ask then of the town council, um, do you want to uh, discuss this in executive session, or do you want to move forward on this right now?
I never want to discuss this ever again for the rest of my life. Um, this has been going on for how many years, Jeff? Ten years?
A long time, a long time.
Yeah, so I, I'm, I'm just gonna make, I'm just gonna make a motion that if, if Attorney Gunning can negotiate a proper settlement, that uh, I, I move that uh, he's authorized as case counsel um, uh, to, to move ahead to a settlement with a zero, zero payment, yeah, mutual dismissal on, on this whole, like, whole matter.
Alright, so you are making a motion? Have, are you phrasing this as a formal motion?
I sure am.
Alright, now, I will ask for a second and then see if there were any other comments. Does anyone second this motion?
Thank you. I'll second it as long as we don't have to pay Ureca one cent.
Okay.
Which I, I know Mike made that motion.
Alright, but that's, that's, see, that's what Mike just said, okay. Do, does anyone have comments or questions about this?
Well, he made the comment that Senator, Senator Attorney Gunning settled it.
Yes.
With no, so I, I will second it at that motion.
Yes, okay, thank you. That's what Mike said, okay, because it was, it's called zero, zero then, okay?
Sure.
With them, so, okay. Uh, so Mike Lencioni moved, and uh, Rich Young seconded the, uh, that we agree that Mr. Gunning, Jeffrey Gunning, proceed as counsel uh, in the town ordinance violation case against Robert Ureca with regards to the zero, zero um, settlement with mutual dismissal. Um, I will take a roll call vote to see how everybody feels. So, uh, Mike Lencioni?
Aye.
Michael Martinez?
Aye.
Richard Young? Rich Young?
Aye.
Okay, Pam Doobie?
Aye.
And Dinah Jumber's aye. So we have five ayes, the motion carries that we um, uh, prove that the uh, town, not town, but the attorney Jeffrey Gunning, who is handling the town ordinance violation case against Robert Ureca, proceed with a zero, zero settlement with mutual dismissal. Alright, thank you all. Mr. Gunning, any other recommendations or comments on that?
Uh, I'll, I'll keep you informed, and hopefully we'll get it finalized. I love the specialty, thank Councilman Lencioni for making the motion, and also uh, you, you recommend that this is a possible alternative, and uh, it's one of the first things we've gotten a response out of, so, so thank you on both counts.
Alright, thank you. Okay, so let us move on now, we'll finish up with communications. There's no other miscellaneous business as far as I know. So, under communications, we have um, letters from the town residents to the plan commission president regarding limits on short-term rental properties. Now, in addition to that, there were emails and texts that I also received, um, and we have already discussed those topics. And then there was a letter received from, in Angie Rezak regarding four twenty-two Groveland, and that um, pertained to a complaint she made about a house that was not painted, um, you know, newly pa, you know, that it needed some upkeep and stuff like this, so I responded to her via email, and anybody will share that with anybody uh, in the town I will forward. In fact, I think I did share that communication with the town council. So you already have received that. Um, now, I, because it is already nine oh seven, I will open for a very short session of comments. There will be no discussions, and I will, if someone talks for too long a time, I will cut you off. I'm not giving a time limit, you know, right now, uh, but because it's getting very late. So it isn't, uh, this is an opportunity to make a comment, but not to discuss or to argue something. So just FYI, and I know that there's a lot, the reason I'm saying this is because there is such a large group of people who are participating today at the meeting. So, is there anyone who would like to make a comment? Please indicate to me so that we can unmute you. If there's anybody who's, okay, I don't see any photos over here, so maybe I should call, call you out by name. Corinne, do you have any comments you wanted to make?
Um, I just, can you hear me?
Yes.
I wanted to find out what was happening about the, our street, about possibly getting the um, plumbing done down the street or the paving done, and I was curious about whether anything was going on about that.
Okay, we addressed that issue before you joined our meeting, I think. It was early on in the beginning of the meeting where we addressed this. Uh, our road commissioner is not here today. And right now, we're waiting on money from the state to figure out how much exactly we could do, because there were some plans in place. And the, one plan did include paving Hiawatha. However, the town, I mean, not town, the city of Michigan City, said that they are actually having a hard time finding the plastic mains, the water mains on Hiawatha. And they had no plans of digging up all of the mains, at least at this current time.
Well, I do know a little bit about that, because um, along the way, I've done several things to try to increase the um, pressure, the water pressure, and one person who dug up my front yard and replaced the pipe from the street to my house, said, you know, I've got it dug up, I'm going to change the pipe, put in new pipe, but the problem was not there. The pipe is that there's a very small inadequate pipe down the middle of the street.
Yes, okay.
Corrosion. So it's nuts to pave the street and to replace that.
Alright, okay, Corinne, look, I thank you for that comment, and it is a valuable one, and I will pass it on to our road commissioner and to the water department as well at Michigan City, okay? And I'm sorry, I said we weren't gonna discuss, and I a- answered you, and I should not have answered, so, at that time. But thank you, okay. I'm gonna go down the line to anyone I see here, or, okay, Ralph Fox? Did you have comments? No. Mary Lorman, any comments from you? You can unmute by star six if you want to have a comment to make.
No, I, I, actually, I do have a comment on um, your new business eight E. Um, I, I think someone made a comment in the chat as well, that sometimes these phone calls are getting about, you know, complaints about public urination and noise, they're not just rental properties.
Thank you for making that, that point, okay, that, I agree. I'm just saying that this is, they, these people reported a rental property though, so that one was for sure. And I'm commenting again, but thank you for your comment. Alright, next, uh, let's see who I have on my list here. Uh, Jennifer Willie, did you have anything else to say? No. Okay, thank you, Roy Chapman.
Uh, it seems like you've already decided that we are going to have a leaf ordinance, and you're not gonna have any input from the town. Did you hear any of that?
Yes. Oh, no, no, I heard what you said, but we have not, we, we are, we have not voted on this yet.
But the way you're talking.
Information, in case you didn't hear in the meeting, we are collecting information.
I heard it, I heard all the meetings.
Thank you, okay. Thank you for your comment. Next, uh, let's see who is on here, we got Mary David Heckman? Or Brenda, any comments from you? No? Sam or Jean Paxton?
I have a question, well, I have a comment about the leaf ordinance proposal. Um, I take care of our leaves, I mulch them up and compost them, and I would not be in favor of a mandatory fee to be uh, paying for a service that I'm not gonna use.
Okay, thank you for your comment. Alright, and, okay, next, uh, Gee Haptus?
Yes, I would echo Sam's comment, and I have one other uh, question, you, you can just hear it. Are there plans to restripe the entrance off of Old Grand Beach Road onto El Portal as it was prior to the construction?
Oh, good question, thank you, okay. Alright, plans to stripe the street, okay. Good question, thank you very much. Alright, Claire Bach?
Two one, great.
Claire, Claire, do you have any questions or no comments? Dinah? Alright, I'm gonna, Claire Bach, it's star six, in case you wanted to make a comment. You may be passing on it, alright. Next is Chris Black. Any comments today?
How will the council notify people at the time and start of the working session on the twenty-second?
By posting on the website.
Thank you.
The calendar part works.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, so no more comments or questions from anyone else, then I don't hear anything else. In that case, uh, council, any comments from you?
Yeah, this is Michael, uh, Martinez. Just wanted to say thanks to Mr. Gunning for closing the loop on that Ureca case. Um, looks like crossing our fingers, it's coming to a close, but thank you for your efforts.
Thank you, Michael. Okay, anybody else on council? I hope not, we're all good, in that case.
Wait, 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 Rich Young here.
Okay, Rich.
I would like to know if the plan commission or the BZA, which it should have gone to, ruled on that carport on Mah Ponche Street.
Uh, okay, Rich, that's another question. Ralph is shaking his head no, so we can discuss that later, no.
Because that's something the town has been very against having.
Ri- Rich, they haven't returned yet, so that's not a question right now, okay?
And then the, my other comment is. And then my other comment is, and as you all know, Dinah, we were coming up, we were working on the condemnation of houses. The house two doors down from me now has a hole in its roof, and it is not condemned. And the owner, who I think you personally talked to...
Yes.
...told you he was gonna take care of it.
Yes, okay.
We definitely desperately need a condemnation of property.
Okay. I agree, thank you. Okay. In this case now, I am going to thank everybody for having participated and spoken at the meeting, and I am going to adjourn this meeting. I assume I can, well, I'm gonna ask for a motion to make sure we're official, so I need a motion for adjourning.
So moved.
Okay, Mike Lencioni moved to adjourn a second.
I second it.
Rich Young seconds. I adjourn this meeting, it is now nine sixteen PM. Until we meet at the executive session on the, what did we say, it's gonna be September 22nd, and we will speak then, and to all, a good night. Thank you so much. Thank you, Mike, facilitating.
Yep, thanks.